Yeah, yeah, and you know, just feel free to, because no one sees you shifting yourself around like that.
Ah, okay, okay, cool.
So that way you can just feel free to like, you know, if you gotta slide a little bit around, you can.
Thanks for the tip, Mr. Williams, that's a nice trick.
Well, why not shit on the front row, baby?
There you go.
Alright, I'm ready to listen to a boring meeting and then win some property.
City!
Woo! It's good to see all you people out here today, thank you for coming out!
Yes.
God, Billy's wearing something else. Is that Billy Falco?
Is that, sorry, the councilman, you're missing Councilman Falco, I'm sorry, that's not him, it's an imposter.
Need a fingerprint check.
Yeah.
Nah, he's a good friend of mine, that's him, I can attest.
Are you, are you sure? That suit does not look correct, sir.
I can attest.
This is my suit, this is my suit when I, when I do defense work. And here, I'm, I'm, I'm doing, I'm defending the, the rights of the people.
That was almost smooth.
That was, that was perfect, that was a perfect opening for the meeting. Uh, dated ten fourteen nineteen eighty-five. Alright, bring this council meeting to order. Um, we'll do a roll call from right to left, city members. Go ahead and start.
Counsel, Councilman Rosetti.
Here.
Counsel, Councilman Falco. Standing by.
Counsel Caputo.
Alright, starting from right to left, any of the council members have any laws they want to present to the people?
Uh, yeah, I have a, a few, starting with, um, the Proxy Voting Act. Uh, it's pretty much an internal act, uh, for, uh, for cleaning up some, some confusion in, uh, in, in council procedure. But it's become apparent that, uh, when we have absent council members that are excused absences, uh, there's some debate on whether or not they get a vote. And this, uh, this act would allow them to have a vote because they were elected for the people for a reason. Uh, and I'd like to reiterate that is a, an excused absence which we have definition for. Um, and I'd also like to say that it is only for voting, not for introducing bills. And, uh, that's, that's the long and short of it, so I can open it up to any question or comment.
Alright. We'll open it to the people first. Any people, anyone has any questions on it behind the podium? State your name.
Uh, Asha Williams, Director of, of the Bureau. Um, yeah, uh, so I've, I have a, just a, oh, just a, there's a comment. Honestly, there's a lot of good debate that happens on the floor when these bills are introduced that, uh, council members may not be privy to if they're doing their absentee votes. Um, that they would not hear the concerns of the people and they've already cast their vote, uh, before any debate has happened in front of, uh, the public. So I, uh, I would ask that the council members, uh, reject this. Uh, and in fact, do a different amendment that if you are not here, you cannot vote or introduce bills. Uh, that's all I got.
Alright, thank you for your input. Anyone else? Alright, any council members?
Um, I guess, uh, Benedict.
Uh, I, I tend to agree with, uh, Mr. Williams' comment that, uh, for voting, it shouldn't become practice to proxy in all the time, even if it's an excused one. Like, like you said, there should be a chance for debate and to hear the concerns of the people before casting your vote. I, I, I wholeheartedly agree with that.
See, I do, I do see that argument, and it is a very good one. And obviously, I'm not advocating for proxying just for the sake of proxying. I do think that you should be present, you should be here, but everybody knows that shit happens, right? Excuse my language, but it does. And I don't think that you should have your right of a vote stripped from you, uh, because you were unable to come here. Now, yeah, you do not hear the, uh, the arguments and everything, but you were gonna vote one way prior to the arguments, and everybody else here should be able to, uh, to vote accordingly.
Perhaps there should be some restrictions on proxy votes then, so like a proxy can't be a tiebreaker, um, things of that nature.
Question has been, uh, asked, we'll get to you, uh, Mr. Rogers.
Sorry, dude, sorry, Jase.
Um, the, we have even interdiscussed, uh, a limit to like two, you know, to a term of proxy voting. That would be limited.
It has been discussed, it wasn't written in, but, uh, we could write in, uh, we could write in, uh, either a limit, or we could write in what, uh, Councilor Caputo suggested with the, uh, with the no tiebreaker rule.
Alright, I think it'd be safe to put both in, actually, um. Any more questions about the bill? Uh, Winters, you said you raised your hand.
Uh, Jason, could you yell, please?
Yeah, yeah, uh, sorry. Uh, yeah, I was actually going to bring up the, um, the two per limit, um, rule, I think that was my idea. And I do also agree that,
It was your idea.
Yeah, I do also agree that, um, a, a proxy should not, um, I also feel that, um, I think maybe like one hour prior to any vote, uh, it's kind of like, that's like, it's like really short notice, I would probably say twenty-four hours. You know, that way we know like they, they read it, they, 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 they had a chance to, you know, uh, speak on it, right? But I think, I think one hour doesn't give, doesn't give the person, I would feel like, it would, it would feel like a rushed vote, right? Does that make sense? So I, I feel like it could look within twenty-four hours to a vote. I, I don't know, it, it's however you guys feel would be fair. I just don't want anyone to like rush a, rush a vote on something they, they did not read all the way through.
Oh, Councilor, I would, I would agree with you. I would, uh, agree with you wholeheartedly, but, uh, it seems that we have a habit of, uh, not putting our bills in the hopper until, uh, until the day of. You know, if we could have all, all bills to be introduced twenty-four hours before, before, uh, the meetings, then I'd agree.
That could be also something to discuss as well, for something later down, down the line.
Alright, do we feel like we have enough information to vote on this?
I would, uh, before the vote,
Express language, go ahead.
I would like to say that I, uh, I am amending it at my desk here in Crayon, uh, and I'm putting, uh, voting lim, the voting limit total and the non-tiebreaker ruling.
And for it not to, uh, include, not, we have one more clause in there, not to include something else. Sipping my mind right now.
I don't recall.
Safe answer.
Yeah, I thought it was just the, the, the two per term and no tiebreaker. I, I think the third.
Alright.
Yeah, I think that was, well, today anyways.
Alright, are you guys, uh, willing, ready to vote?
Uh, yes.
If you guys know enough information?
Changes included, I would, yes.
Alright. So with those two changes included, we'll put up for vote. Um, all the council members for the, uh, for the act, raise your hand. So I have three, I vote for six, six to one. Let the record show it, the vote for this act is six to one. Do you have any, uh, other bills, Rosetti, to present to the floor?
Uh, yeah, I have the, uh, revised, uh, Business Promotion Act. Last, uh, a couple weeks ago when I introduced it, it was, uh, voted to be tabled until I could discuss it with the, uh, with the Business Revenue Bureau. I have, and, uh, we, we've, we've sharpened out some things. We've, uh, we've defined what would constitute you losing your icon. Uh, if I can pull it up here in my, uh, my folder here. Uh, so your, your, your little icon on the map that you paid for, you would lose it if you fell out of good, good standing with the BRB, which has been, uh, described as, uh, which has been described as free of strikes and up to date with your paperwork. Um, and if you, if you fall out of good standing, you have one month to, uh, to, uh, rectify that situation. And, or you will lose your, your icon on the map.
Alright.
When do you come to community meetings?
Uh, for those that weren't here, I guess I'll give a brief, the brief synopsis of the bill again, just, just for the reintroduction. It's, uh, it's for businesses that do not have, uh, a little, a little icon on your Welcome to Los Santos map. Uh, you can pay, uh, a fee, a non-refundable fee of two thousand dollars as long as you are in good standing and have been, uh, in business for three months. Uh, that should, uh, give you time to file twice with, uh, with the BRB, uh, to be able to ensure that you are an active business, uh, and there's no, uh, no, no funny business going on behind the scenes. Uh, so you pay that to apply for a logo, uh, to be put on the map with your name. And, uh, I have researched into it that we can put, uh, basically any, any logo we want, but I discussed, uh, with the BRB that it shall contain, there should be, uh, probably fifty or so pre-approved icons, uh, that there can be chosen from.
Alright. Let's, uh, you, are you, any more you need to discuss or explain about the bill?
No, no.
For me to vote for council? Alright, council, I'm going to vote to council, excuse me, comment to comments, council, any questions from the council?
I have no comments.
So that maybe the revision was done in concert with the, the Business Revenue Bureau?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Oh no. You're good, you're good.
Alright, any questions? Uh, Falco for the Business Promotion Act nineteen eighty-five? Alright, then I move to vote to the people. Um, anyone have a question about this bill, line up at the podium.
Uh, Asha Williams, Director, um, yeah, uh, just to, to reiterate, we've, we've talked about this, uh, already, and I think, yeah, uh, we can, the, the BRB supports, uh, the, uh, the bill going forward.
Thank you, Asha. Alright, Deputy? Deputy Mayor?
Robert Danob, uh, Deputy Mayor and owner of, of Vaginas. Um, I love the idea, uh, but I also think that that could prevent, uh, an unfair opportunity for some businesses. Um, with the simple idea of, uh, my business is going in the mall. So how are the businesses in the mall going to be able to get an icon on the map? If we're in the mall?
Um, currently, that is not addressed in the bill. Um, I still would need to hear from, uh, from the federal government about what approval they're gonna give for, uh, for icon standing with the, with the mall. So currently, that has not been, uh, been addressed in this bill.
So you understand why, you know, as a business owner in the mall, I, I, I don't have the same opportunity to advertise my business and let people see where my business is, because I don't have an icon.
I, I do see, I do see your point, and again, that's, uh, that's waiting on an answer, but, uh, I, I do believe that if this is passed and, uh, and we come to find out that we can, uh, extend the same, like, uh, the same to, uh, to our members of the mall, then, uh, then we can always write an amendment to, to include you. Or we don't even need, need an amendment, because you would just be able to under this law.
But there's no guarantee on that.
Yeah, but that's not due to the bill, it's due to, uh, to higher up the meat.
I believe, I believe Mr. Winas had his hand raised.
Okay, sorry, uh, Mr. Rogers?
Uh, my question for, uh, Councilman Rosetti. Um, when speaking with the federal government, is there a way that, um, when the mall is placed on our tourist maps, um, that maybe we can have like a side, uh, table of contents specifically for like a mall directory? So that way, when you, uh, when you open your tourist map and you go to look at the mall, right, you, you, maybe you'll get an additional page that will be a mall directory that will list, uh, the businesses inside the mall? Do you think that might be something that the, the federal government might be able to, uh, add on to our tourist maps?
Um, I, I think it's a great idea, and, uh, it should be brought up to the federal government. Honestly, I support that entirely, but, uh, again, that, that's nothing to do with this bill, so, um, unfortunately, I can't address it in this bill.
I understand. Are you having conversations with the federal government currently in regards to this bill?
Uh, not in regards to this bill, no.
Okay. Maybe we can partner together afterwards, and we can, uh, see about putting a ticket to the Senate?
Yeah, I'd, I'd, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
Alright, but given that this bill is, uh, written in its current, uh, state, do the, uh, council members think they have enough information to vote on this, if there's no more questions?
I do.
You think you have enough information? You do, Mr. Benedict?
We don't?
Should we count someone Falco?
Please.
Alright, let's, uh, let's put it to vote. Alright, show of hands, show the, uh, support for the, uh, Business Revenue Act of nineteen eighty-five, or the Business Revenue Act, or the, this act, uh, alright, I got one, two, three. I'm voting for it, so if the record shows unanimous vote for passage, this act. Do you have any more acts to present to the table, Mr. Rosetti?
I have one more, don't mean to take up everybody's time again, but, uh, if the Unfair Trade Practices Act, uh, basically, it's a bill to protect consumers in the state of San Andreas against unfair and unreasonable business practices. It defines, uh, what the act of private monopolization would be, uh, basically, uh, ex, excluding incon, inconspiracy by themselves or with other persons, uh, to control the business activities of other persons, uh, and thereby contrary to public interest, uh, creating a restraint or competition in any particular field of trade. Um, I've worked with the, with the BRB on this as well, and it essentially, uh, declares that if any, uh, if any business is found to be practicing, uh, unfair monopolization, uh, they are subject to, uh, ten thousand dollar or twenty-five percent of their monthly revenue, whichever is greater, uh, fine. And that would be handled by the, uh, by the BRB.
Alright, um, I'll open the, the discussion to the people first on this bill. Anyone have any questions about this bill, come to the podium, state your name. Anyone has any questions, alright, move the questions to the council, the council members. Oh, do you have a question, ma'am?
Oh yeah, I can go blind. Um, hello, my name is Doctor Roxy, um, I seen quite a few businesses around the place, you know, doing some shady stuffing with money and stuff, like, but the problem is, how would you actually, uh, how would you actually, you know, police this in terms of, uh, businesses and stuff? Because, you know, you got things like YouTube, which is like a monopoly of hardware and stuff that, you know, usually prices hard. And then you've got, uh, uh, you know, s, uh, fast food shops, which, you know, compete with prices, so just wondering how it'd be policed and stuff?
Um, so basically, uh, I'm glad you brought up, brought up U2, um, they are, without putting it, uh, without sugarcoating it, yeah, they, they do kind of have a monopoly. Uh, this would be policed through audits, and, uh, it would be policed, uh, through audits and random, random visitation, information gathering, a, a, any tool available to the, the Business Revenue Bureau would be, would be used to, uh, to police this.
Okay!
Yeah.
It seems rather invasive.
Well, they already have these tools, it's just, uh, using their tool to be able to, to accomplish their job. I believe that, uh, I believe that businesses come under regular intervals of, of audits regardless, and-
That power exists already in the Business Act.
Right, but, but it's not, it's not a regular practice just to audit everybody to make sure they're complying. It's if there's a sense of, of wrongdoing or not compliant.
Okay, and it's not, it's not instantly saying that everybody will be audited. It is saying that if there's a sense, maybe there's a, there's a bunch of complaints that come in about a business, then it could start this process, but it's not like an automatic thing to be audited.
Uh, don't mind me asking about it, like, for instance, like the U2 we brought up, uh, how would you actually find out what would be a fair price, you know, to own the one and only shop? So how would you find out what would be like, you know, you know, uh, the prices that would be fair for that?
Uh, that would be left to the devices of, uh, of the, of the Business Revenue Bureau, but I imagine that it would be, uh, through investigative work, finding out what, uh, what other prices, uh, are, are, uh, are available around, around the country, and, uh, checking out the, uh, Consumer Price Index.
Okay, thank you, guys!
Alright, anyone in the public have any questions? If not, I move the, uh, questions to the council, council, council members, do you have any questions on the bill?
He, I, I do more of a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
So with regards to the wording in this, um, one term used is unconscionable pricing, if I recall, yeah. Sailor consumer goods at an unconscionable purchase price to consumer having uncool bargaining power. Now, I am a proponent of the free market, and I believe that capitalism is the greatest form of economy in this world. And it is what drives the engine of freedom and this country as a whole. The prices are ultimately dictated by what a person is willing to pay. And that should be the only limiting factor for price at the end of the day.
I'd have to disagree when it's, uh, when it's in the form of a monopoly. If I need to go there to buy something, then you have all the bargaining power in there. And it's not what I'm willing to pay, I'd gladly go somewhere else, but if there is no other store available for that, then that's-
So I, I follow my, Mr. Comptito, I, uh, completely agree. The free market is the free market, capitalism is capitalism, that's what, that's the umbrella in which we all live. The issue of the monopoly there, I feel in, in U2 is a very specific one. It should not be the, the basis that set precedence in the, in the city. Now, I also draw issue, obviously, with the monopoly in any form, but, um, given our certain circumstances with certain situations, that's how we deal with everything. And on top, on, on, on the other side of that is the BRD, like I said before, the BRD holds those powers already. Um, so it doesn't need to be reiterated in any other bills. But again, the price is one thing that is set by the market, and I think, um, any more questions, any comments?
If we took, if we took that, that one line out, would you feel ready to vote? So the main purpose is for, uh, monopolization. I believe that, that there should be fair competition. I don't want any one group to hold power over everybody and be able to set whatever price they want. That's not, it's not, uh, breeding any innovation.
Alright, um, you go ahead.
I, I'd say a, a, a bill focused more on breaking up monopolies so you can have that competition is perhaps a more interesting or, or positive change as opposed to, like, if you, if you remove section two, A, like we're talking about, this, this bill ultimately kind of loses a lot of its teeth, I think, um, and purpose. Would, would you not agree?
I think it loses, uh, half of what it's about, yeah, I don't.
Perhaps a, uh, a bill more focused on, you know, bringing more businesses into the city that could compete with these other monopolies such as U2 or PDM, et cetera, would, would be a, a, a more, um, positive change as, as opposed to, you know, going after businesses that really have no choice.
Maybe even mandating at least two businesses that have, you know, crowbars or something.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree, I agree with that.
Wha, what's to say that a crowbar is worth fifty bucks or a hundred bucks? Ultimately, it just comes down to how badly do you need?
Okay, well, I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll have, uh, I'll have my office get in touch with your office, and maybe we can work together on, uh, on something like that.
Sounds good.
Uh, I'd like to motion to table this bill.
Anyone second that motion?
I'd second the motion.
Second, Dave.
Alright, motion's passed, the bill will be, uh, brought up for ni, in next meeting. It should be tabled. Alright, any more bills, Mr. Rosetti, Congressman?
I'm not ready, that's all.
Alright. Councilmember Falco?
Okay, so, we, the crowbar owners of, of America, thank you for the consideration of the previous bill, uh, and the potential of breaking up of the monopoly. That being said, I understand, uh, that being said, you know, again, I thank you all for coming out, I do realize that we forgot to, to say the pledge of allegiance at the start of the meeting.
Oh, wow.
Oh, dad.
Oh shit, Bob was gonna kill us.
Oh my gosh.
So, I, I'm gonna ask you all to join me now in,
You're gonna lead it?
Yes, I am.
Motion to lead back, okay.
Why was the newest flag?
In the back room. Alright, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
That's, uh, the justice word.
Amen.
Roger, welcome.
Customary thumbs up.
America!
God bless America.
God bless America.
Hell yeah.
Thank you for your patience.
Alright, now we all agree that that was at the beginning, right?
Yes. Yeah, but Bob wasn't here to push his motion to the floor, literally. Alright, go ahead.
Now, I, I do want to bring a topic up for discussion before we, we bring a bill to. I think, in the interest of, of, you know, representing the interests of the state of San Andreas and the city of Los Santos, I think it's important that we, you know, as a state and a city, um, are properly able to protect our interests, and therefore I'd like to open the floor for discussion from the public on raising a private army for the state of San Andreas.
What the fuck?
Uh, what? Billy?
What are you doing?
I agree!
I'd ask people to come up and speak and, and give me their thoughts.
Well, if you had the floor, uh, anyone have table, any, any thoughts on this, uh, this statement by Councilman Falco? Please line up at the podium and state your name and your comments. Thank you very much.
Howdy there, Jolene Applebottom, my question would be, uh, of said private army, uh, who's funding it?
Councilmember?
The funds would come from a variety of sources that we would need to study the, the best, you know, the best source. Some of it would be from the Business Revenue Bureau, some of it would be through, um, through other existing taxation, and the goal would be to not raise taxes at all if we can, um, except in times of emergent need.
Okay, so, you're proposing a private military, uh, funded off of taxes without tax increase, therefore most likely tutting ca- uh, cutting taxes, if you will, from other sectors of our public life, and in our ad quote, state of emergency, there would be a proposed increase of taxes? So therefore denying the whole previous, we won't increase taxes, what would you define as a state of emergency?
We were under attack.
By who?
The Russians.
Okay. You know what, I think, I think I've asked enough questions, so I'll leave the rest to the line behind me.
I, I will, you know, I will state that, again, you know, this is, this is just the first, just opening up the floor for comment, you know, we, we have to conduct a study as to, as to where the, the sources of funding would come.
Alright, state your name and, uh, your comments, sir.
Elliot John, uh, Councilman Falco, I'm of the belief that fighting against the commies would be in the federal military's interest, not the state's.
Councilmember?
That is correct. However...
Go on, yes, please, please, go on.
Are you familiar with the movie Red Dawn?
I'm not, no.
Well, and a, a group of plucky kids go, you know, like are, they run into the woods when, when the invading Russian ar- Soviet army comes in, and they help defeat, defeat them. So it's important that we also be able to stand for ourselves so the federal government not be able.
Wolverine!
Wolverine!
I believe that to be the purpose of the second amendment, that's not.
Well, that's right, and we're, and we can organize as a militia.
At that point, we're not military, but do go on there.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, it's like having a, a National Guard or a State Guard.
Do we not already have one? Uh, say again, Councilmember Rosetti?
Do we not already have a, a State Guard or a National Guard? For San Andreas?
I'm not aware of it. N- negative, it's not written in the constitution.
Fair enough.
Um, do you have any more questions, sir, or statements?
Oh no, thank you all.
Get answered, I'm sorry.
Yes, I, I believe it did.
Appreciate you, thank you.
Uh, Benjamin Rigzenoli, I am the Director of the San Andreas Security Bureau, um, Councilman Falco, are you not the one who wanted to exchange buses for nuclear power plants in the city?
Wait, what?
That, that is correct, uh-
Okay, uh, well, let me continue, let me continue. Are you, and now you're wanting to put a paramilitary organization into San Andreas?
No, it's a military organization.
Okay, then why not the United States Armed Forces, why can't we just let them handle that as Zankudo?
Again, it, it's not a military, it's not a paramilitary, it's a military organization. And, again, it's just to have a, like a State Guard.
Th- but that's, we can get the National Guard from the Armed Forces.
Yeah, but we don't have any, we don't ha- we don't have any here. And also, the National Guard is, is typically raised by the state.
Correct, so then why don't we just hire, uh, just set up a National Guard in the constitution?
I mean, that, that sort of this.
Okay, but then why don't you just say it's National Guard?
Because I'm opening things up for comment.
Um, I'm gonna also petition the council for an act of no confidence against, uh, Councilman Falco for his insanity of trying to use these outrageous bills.
Uh, wow.
Um, the fact of the whole nuclear power plant for one, because I'm sure he's gonna bring that up again, because he has multiple times. On top of that, he wants to separate a military power from the United States of America, and that's unco- I feel like that's un- unpatriotic on top of that. Uh, while I do understand and have had to deal with, um, attacks on City Hall by, um, communist factions, this is highly inappropriate.
Excuse me, sir, but raising, you know, raising a militia in, in the, is built right into the second, uh, to, into the Second Amendment.
Yes, but I, I think you're unsafe, I think you bring unsafe probability to the council.
Having a, a State Guard is not an unreasonable-
Then-
Request, and, and again, I did not bring forth a bill. I did not bring forth a bill, I wanna, I wanna make it clear, I opened the floor up for discussion on the subject, so we can study it.
Yeah, he's just asking questions.
Yeah, but I'm gonna still stand with my opinion on that. Alright, I thank you.
Here, here.
Yes, sir.
Uh, echo, one birthday, come back back, Roxy Turner reporting for duty, sir! I love to patriot and help my country with these communist fools coming to break our country! I would love to make my grandfather Dutch nephew's proud, he served in World War I, II and Korea, I would love to do my part for my country!
Thank you, ma'am.
Go Roxy!
Hurrah!
Alrighty.
Yeah, state your name and your comment.
Chaz River Fox, given the status of Zankudo, I would like to support, um, what, uh, the security guy kinda said, and if this is basically just a anti-communist mercenary group, what provisions in this uh,
Discussion, we will have a discussion, it's a discussion.
Yeah, what, what, what's, what separates other groups from this discussion, from this, um, mercenary group being used? Like, is it just for basically to be against communists? Or is this also just a way to also have a paramilitary organization that could be just a extra police force? Didn't we already have a marshals for state law enforcement stuff?
Boo!
Oh yeah, that worked out real well.
Yes, that is correct, we did, so we're not, that's not what we're talking about, though, go ahead.
Thank you for your question, I, I, I wanna just make it clear, this is, this would be a government entity. It is not a mercenary group, it is not a group of paramilitary, it is, it is not anything, it's not some, some unofficial group, it would be run and at the, at the control of the mayor or the governor. And it's not, you know, and it, who is an elected official, uh, who, and so they ultimately have accountability. There's, there's a very big difference between that and it's just some mercenary group or paramilitary group. Again, we're talking about raising a state National Guard.
It's true, a governor wouldn't have a state National Guard, it is possible.
State level National Guard.
Yes.
But, that, you know, this, we're not, we're just discussing it, discussing it, I-
This, this country does have a bad history when it comes to state guards and stuff. Just saying, rather, it would be best to rely on a federal level entity for that type of stuff than having some posse risen up from and under the control of a governor that has only been in the city or into the area, what, dozen times? Thank you. That's of my concern, thank you.
I appreciate your time, thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Well done, sir, well done.
Robert Danov, uh, Deputy Mayor, vagina owner. Uh, I submit that, in my opinion, is that, uh, there is no need for this law, it already exists, like you said, uh, C- Councilman, uh, the Second Amendment exists to, uh, resist all, all, uh, tyranny, whether it be foreign or domestic. There are more gun, guns in this country than there are people in this country. If there, if there's, if there's ever a threat to this island, the people will stand up and fight for this island, already. So there is no need for a private army, because we already have the world's greatest private army right now. In my opinion.
Militia clause that you pointed out, Billy.
Yeah, and, I mean, a- and again, though, i- it's not a private army, it's a public arm.
Right, and that already exists, due to the Second Amendment, that's all I'm saying.
Right.
Well, the Second Amendment also says a well-regulated militia, which we are not well-regulated.
I'll tell those regulations.
Right. But that's all.
Discussion, I'm lighting the discussion, but thank you very much, appreciate it.
Uh, Max, I, I am gonna ask you if you could sing your, your question.
Oh, no, this is serious business.
Oh, fair enough.
Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, I mean, of the council, um, Max Dillon, local rock star, entertainer, entertainer extraordinaire. Yeah, go Max! This is serious business here, alright, this is super serious business. You say about all this, you know, the, the, you know, a people's army, right? That's what you're trying to say, Billy, I love you, Billy, plus we could, you need to go out and get some drink later, anyway, listen, besides that, opens up the door for more criminal power. Why? Because that makes Zankudo a playable area. Zankudo is a very powerful place. If you do that with the military and make it a private thing or whatever, the, the evildoers out there are gonna get more powerful because they're gonna wanna be more powerful to fight whatever the hell militia thinks is, just for the fucking giggles of it, and because they might be getting more weapons from it. So I think opening up in that Pandora's Box is gonna engulf the city in some really heavy artillery.
Literally.
That's all I gotta say, deuces!
I didn't know Max was such a crime expert, actually.
Thank you.
If I may, it's, um, Jesse Halliday, LSPD. I'm just gonna echo what everybody else has been saying in section one of our constitution, every citizen does have a right to defend themselves. Uh, as a member of LSPD, part of our oath is also to protect this great state against any threat, foreign or domestic. And I believe the proposition of this bill is showing a lack of faith in the police department.
Well, it's just a discussion.
Furthermore-
It's just a discussion.
And I'm just making a statement.
No, I know, but I wanna make sure that's clear, we're not actually, there's no bill, there's nothing, we're just talking.
And, yeah, there's no statement about a lack of it, and, and we, we open up the floor so this sort of comment can be made.
Understood. Uh, just furthermore, I believe that the, um, the establishment of this militia may invoke a certain feel of vigilanteism in some citizens, not everybody, but just some citizens in this great state, so for the sake of keeping the peace and everything like that, I'd, I'd be, uh, disinclined to support a, a militia, that's all I'm trying to say, thank you for your time.
Ah, thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yeah, way to go, Jesse.
Alright, do the, uh, does the city have any other comment on this discussion? Alright, council members, do you have any comments on this discussion?
Yeah, I do, um, Billy and Mr. Falco, in, in, in case we, we do go to war and we're attacked by, uh, foreign entities or communist or whatever the case may be, will there be a draft, will, 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 will you draft, uh, these citizens to go to war?
Good question.
The goal would be a volunteer army, if at all possible.
Right, right, but let's just say, you know, shit really goes downhill, and, you know, you're, you're, you know, in, will you need it, will you draft people, like, would you draft Mrs. Applebottom or Mr. Furelli to, to go to war?
What? I'm going to war!
I, I think, I think that-
I will, sir!
Thank you.
That would, that would be unconstitutional.
Very question
Hello, dude!
Would have to go to a public vote.
That would be unconstitutional, Billy!
Yeah, no, I think, I think, I think that question would have to go to a public vote and review by the, the, uh, state judici- judiciary, because it's a very good question and it's something that needs to be debated properly, and it's not, certainly not something I can weigh in on.
Do you think that, like, violent criminals could have their- Can, can, can violent criminals have their records expunged if they volunteer for this military and then abide by the rules? I mean, why not, they're, they're best shooters.
We, we can talk about a bad company later.
He does have a point about the shooter.
We can talk about a bad company later.
I, I would rather have the ballers, uh, shooting communists rather than myself, because they have way better aim.
Hmm, do you need to volunteer?
I, I'm, I'm pretty sure if you-
To go, to go shoot people?
Yeah, I know, they would absolutely volunteer.
Well, that's not all it's entailed, right, it's not just shooting people, um, but also-
Shooting commies.
Well, that, that, but, um, would there be any provisions that deal with, um, uh, people that get drafted and, or rather get drafted but don't report?
Well, I mean, again-
What kind of punishments are levied, levied by the state?
I mean, again, we, we don't know if, if, uh, a draft would be constitutional, so I would-
Given that it would be, what would your, what would your thoughts be?
Well, I think that the law needs to be followed, so you have to enforce the law that is the law of the land.
Right.
That's our duty.
I still think that violent criminals will volunteer, that they should have some type of, uh, you know, either expungement or, or whatnot.
Why can't the, uh, why can't the requirements be the same that anyone needs for a, for a federal job or city job right now?
Right. Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with following this-
Based off that, with a little bit of tweaking?
Yeah, something like based off that.
Interesting. Alright, well, this is a discussion, so you need to present your findings from your discussion and, and to a bill and see the, oh, uh, well, first off, is there any more council members any questions on this discussion?
Uh, no further for me. Can this be over?
Yes. Yes.
Nugget it.
Yes.
Alright.
I, I yield my time.
You yield your time, alright. Mr. Caputo, you have the floor?
Um, I don't have anything for myself, however, I did tell Mr. McLean that I would present his, it's very straightforward. This is the Wheelchair Accessibility Act of nineteen eighty-five. Um, it's fairly boilerplate. Uh, essentially, government facilities are required to have at least one access point for the handicap. Uh, suitable example for an access point would be a handicap ramp.
Alright, it's pretty straightforward, Bill. Let's open the, uh, questions up to the public first. What's your, what's your Accessibility Act, correct, Mr. Caputo?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we call it.
Uh, again, this is just, um, Jesse Halliday. I, I believe in the, uh, right of all people to enter any kind of public building with, uh, egress to a wheelchair. I believe the suggested slope should be no greater than one inch for every single foot of that ramp, sir. Just my, uh, speculation here, but I'm, I'm fully backing and supporting this, uh, Los Santos Citizens with Disability Act of, uh, nineteen eighty-five that's going forward. Yes, sir.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Alright, Jolene Applebottom, as a, uh, previously a doctor and someone who has been in a wheelchair on multiple occasions myself, I think that this is something that honestly should have been addressed sooner. Uh, there is a lot of staff, not a lot of ramps for people to get up and in here if they're in a wheelchair, and, uh, that just ain't quite fair. I think this is a wonderful idea, and, uh, when I inevitably end up in a wheelchair once again, uh, I will be thankful if I can get into places. That's it. Thank you.
Ah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Oh, God, please, buses, Bill, please! Oh, I had my grandpa try to get into PDM and, let's just say it didn't end well. But yeah, wheelchair ramps would be awesome for accessibility for people who cannot use the lanes or stuff. Please, buses, please, to be making doctors, why it's a little bit easier, I mean, a lot like ticking time bombs or anything, so please make it a little bit easier for us. Thank you!
Appreciate your time.
Chase Dollar, Concerned Citizen, uh, would it be possible to amend this to include, uh, all strip clubs and, uh, alcoholic establishments?
Oh, that's a good point.
Man, that's got a point.
We can't really speak for the person that wrote this bill, but we can, it gets amended to it, since he is not present, I guess that's, uh,
I think that would be a great move.
The best we can do.
Just wanted to voice my opinion. Thank you very much.
No, you're, you're very welcome. I think, I think we'll want to see you. That's a good question. Appreciate your time. Alright, there's no more questions to the public. I will pose that question to the council.
I, I, I do have some, some questions, Mr. Caputo. Uh, the, uh, my first question, would this only go forward for new government buildings or would old government buildings require to be retrofitted?
I believe the intention is to have old buildings retrofitted as well.
And, okay, and then, uh, my second question, and you, you called it the Wheelchair Accessibility Act?
Well, chased it.
I, I, so.
You know, I don't.
I yield, but, but.
I, I, I take umbrage with the, 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 the title of Wheelchair Accessibility Act, or WAH. Uh, the implication is that handicapped people are crying or complaining that they're not able to access the buildings, and I, I take great umbrage with that, you know, when, when it should be a, a general right, and we should not be taking issue with it, Mr. Caputo and, and the mayor.
I didn't name it.
I did. We could change. Didn't know that's what that was.
Yeah, maybe we would take Handicap Accessibility Act.
Or just Accessibility Act.
Then it, then it's hard.
Now we're laughing at them?
It's happier, yeah.
Now we're laughing at them?
No, we're laughing, we're laughing with them. All laughing with them.
Got a good.
Or maybe not laughing.
Maybe more, it's more positive than WAH.
Or they may be questioning it, like, whaaat?
I don't, ew, I think either way, he's not here to change it. We could propose names for it, or we could name it ourselves. Say it again, Caputo, I'm sorry.
No, never mind.
No, 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 please.
Say that, it's a good name.
What is? Which one?
Both.
Well, if you were to choose one, which one would it be?
I, I have no, I have no skin in the game.
This is your legacy, Caputo.
This is McLean's bill. This is not mine.
That's the Caputo bill.
Name's no on it.
It's, it's not Mr. Caputo's bill.
Technically, a co-sponsor. Cause you introduced me.
Well, yes, but still.
Booth Waddle.
The Caputo Handicap Accessibility Act.
As the oldest person on this council, this will probably affect me more than you, sooner than later.
You do have a good point.
Hey, so why not name it? Be in your honor.
And, this is a tough one, cause, yes. Well, Congressman Rosetti makes a good point that you are the co-sponsor of this bill. You are not the person that writes the bill. Do you, do you have his confidence in your decision-making today that he would be okay with any changes? Unless, um, the council table, table this, should we table this bill?
I mean, I'm, I'm ready to vote for it, but.
You're ready to vote for it, what about?
Is there a ramp up to the table?
There's a ramp up, maybe.
I think the good outweigh the bad ultimately, this bill, as it stands right now, given the name and everything.
As it stands, sir!
I didn't name it.
I know, again, and the person, again, yes, we did not name it. So, well, I'll just put it up to the council. Alright, rather, yeah, put it up to the council. Do you feel like you have enough information on this, uh, bill to vote?
Why don't we just call it the unnamed ramp bill for now?
Uh, can we, can we call it the Americans with Disabilities Act, uh, bill? Or Americans with Disabilities Accessibility Act, though? That way it's ADA compliant with, uh, current standards in America?
I, I'm not sure what you're, uh, what you're saying about ADA compliance.
I'm just saying, like, uh, like, instead of calling it the Wheelchair Accessibility Act, just call it the, um, you know, ADA Accessibility Act. That way it's just, it's more streamlined with the current.
Uh, just one comment, that might, that might be coming in about five years. I'm gonna step back.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've heard rumors of it, but.
I'll be right ahead of the time.
Well, you know, given this.
This stupid talk with Bob Dole!
I mean, I saw that back to the future movie.
So.
Is that guy driving a Delorean?
No more questions? I think there's more.
He works at PDM, so he could.
So, um, and the council, there's no questions?
Self a bitch, maybe he knows the future.
Most of us can move to vote. Do you have any objections to voting, Caputo? Sorry, I didn't get your vote.
No, I'm, 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 I'm good.
Alright, Falco, you, uh, feel voting? Alright, let's put this to vote. Um, and the name will stand, um, as the bill writer wrote it, and then we can change it, we can amend it, and, and session. Alright, so everyone vote, uh, approve this bill? Raise your hand. Alright, this, uh, bill with the record show, I voted for it. The bill has passed unanimously.
Hallelujah!
Alright.
I'm in.
Moving on.
Thank you.
Mr. Caputo, do you have any more to present to the table, or is that just it, for the council?
Oh, that, that's it for today.
Wait, do we have the strip clubs?
I don't have any bills to present today. Alright, I also don't have any bills to present today. Um, what I'm working on right now is a, um, basically working on a, I don't know, Department of Transportation, essentially. So I'm trying to figure out what, uh, what that would consist of. Um, and I'm also working on putting some, some services in line with some of our newly found bills that have passed to, um, to distribute some of the money out back to the people. I haven't figured out what soc- social services are, so I'm gonna open up the last three minutes to anyone that has any ideas on social services that the city would require. Alright. We'll think about that for the next week, 'cause I'm gonna be working on that too as well. Um, I don't have any more, any more to say. Any council members have any last, uh, last words before we, uh, adjourn? I know, sir.
Is prostitution a public service?
Meeting adjourned.
No.
Auction. Say the thing about the auction.
Oh, thumbs up.
So we've, we've got, so, public.
Um, there will be an auction after, uh, council member, after, after the council meeting.
Thumbs up for America.
So we've got a, uh, public petition to present?
Oh, we do?
It, it's not on, it's not on, on social, uh, it's not on the, the topic, but, uh, Mr. Jimmy Nermes.
Alright.
Back to the chair.
Yeah.
Just when you thought you were out.
Jimmy Nermes, so, in accordance with the City Council Regulation Act of nineteen eighty-five, section seven, legislation by proposition, I have a petition to be presented for adoption by the city council, informing to schedule one as defined by VPO amendment voted by city council in last session. My petition constitutes being able to open and operate tattoo studios in Los Santos. I've gathered a huge amount of support and gathered over sixty-five signatures for this. Should the council want to receive this or listen to the purpose and description, I'd be happy to discuss this now.
Alright, open the floor to the council. Sure. Any questions? No discussion?
Um, I mean, I, sure, would, would this be, uh, taking ownership of existing parlors or the ability to open new ones?
Ownership of existing parlors and being able to operate them.
Would this be all parlors or just a, a specific one?
Could you repeat that? Sorry.
Would, would this be all the parlors or just a, a specific one you're looking to open?
I mean, currently, I'm personally looking at a specific one, but I think it would be opportunity for more people and not just for me to possibly make this happen.
Um, what kind of health standards certificate do you have in place for the artists that will be dealing with this, considering it's very easy to, um, post-sterilization is very key?
Well, I'm currently employed at Hillbox Hospital, so I can guarantee you that my hygiene standards are top-notch personally. And there can be legislation put in place, and the council, the, with, um, with in conversation with me, make sure that we create the guidance that everybody has to comply to.
Yeah, she cleaned my pig in the hall!
For all, um, shops?
Of course.
Any more council members have any questions?
I mean, I'm, I'm awful, new business opportunities, uh, have you already spoken with the, um, the governor's office or the federal government about the implementation of such?
I wanted to present this here first and then go from, from here.
I see.
I think that you would have the council's full approval. I think we're all, we all stand behind small businesses.
Yep. I welcome any business.
Yeah, I welcome it.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So, um, well, let me make it official then. Uh, council members in all favor? Alright.
Hi.
So let this, uh, show that, uh, your bill has been passed unanimously.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I appreciate you listening.
No problem, Jimmy.
Are you chasing?
Yeah. That's awesome. Congratulations.
Woo!
Alright.
Nice.
I guess, uh, we're adjourned again.
I'm seeing.
I think something!
Oh.
I almost said three times.
Okay.
I know, if you want to have like an open question, Diamond.
Yeah, I guess, oh, yeah, I guess, you just do open question. Uh, yes, floor is yours.
Oh, I, I want those bike rental shops counted on account of calling me up and saying I'm stealing their bikes! You know, they got a sign out the front saying bike rentals. I'd love to rent my push bike and a foot in about eight, but they keep calling the police on me!
Have, um, you brought this issue up to local police?
Yes, many times. I was just wondering if this, uh, they said I've gotta own a bike and I'm stealing them and I'm not, I said rental. So I was wondering if we could officially maybe, but, you know, get some sort of thing, maybe running about getting bike rentals or bike ownerships maybe.
I'm okay with this. I, I thought at one point we did have a bike rental place by the beach.
Uh, we have a bike rental place at the airport.
No, but, uh, it's not the good bikes. They're like really slow bikes. I want the, the mountain bikes, like the Scorcher bikes and stuff.
Sounds like a business opportunity.
Yeah, my suggestion to you, Ms. Turner, would be just similar to the previous, uh, lady who, who will put together a petition and, uh, pass it to the, uh, the governor's office.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you!
You're welcome. Anyone that has any questions or anything, you just line up if you, um, if you're in good.
Uh, Ellie John, in relation to that, I think general renters protections might be good to put in place? Uh, for instance, if said protections were to be put in place, you know, anyone who rents a car at the airport, uh, a boat, that kind of thing, would then be, you know, protects from, protect from certain charges, uh, associated with said vehicles. And think having that legislation versus having them as abstract rules per the business might be, uh, might be worthwhile.
I think you figure out.
I think my question there would be, when, when you're renting these, do they give you any kind of documentation something to prove that it's a rental?
Uh, Dr. Roxanne?
Uh, which one? The ones at the beach or, uh, in Play-Doh, or you're just talking about the airport?
Any rented vehicles, I believe.
Uh, I'm not sure I believe so. They give you keys, but I don't know.
They give you keys, so that might, I suppose, be some man of, uh, proof of ownership or proof of rent ship in here.
Alright. Um.
Something to look, look, look towards.
Yeah, exactly, um.
Thank you, council.
You're welcome.
We got some, we got some no speakers?
Yeah.
Oh, fair enough, Danov.
That's okay. Hey, this is, uh, it's actually just a question for one of the council members. Uh, Councilmember Winters. Um, scuttlebutt in the, uh, in the audience, uh, has it that, uh, you had the ability to travel in the future? I do notice that, uh, a few months ago, I saw this movie about a guy that went, uh, you know, in the future. And he owned a DeLorean, which you also own.
Yes.
So I guess my two questions to you are, if you got the ability to travel in the future, why haven't you told me so we could go travel? And the second question is, uh, five years from now, are bands like Oingo Boingo, uh, been publicly assassinated for trying to kill music?
No, uh, Mr. Danov, great question. Uh, one, um, the reason why I do not.
Here, here.
Future with you is because I'm, uh, you know, my, my DeLorean can only sit one person. Uh, my flex capacitor's in the passenger seat. Two, uh, Oingo Boingo is the greatest band of all time, and I'm pretty sure that they'll have multiple platinum albums, uh, going forward in the next five years.
Bold stance.
Alright, anyone else?
Like the record to show that Oingo Boingo is actually shit.
Oh, shit!
Shit.
Seconded.
Alright.
Sacrilege!
Eddie Murphy did a better job than Oingo Boingo.
I won't take up that much of your time, council, um, but I, I wanna know, what do I have to do to bring on, uh, recognition to the entertainment sector of our city? Um, and what I mean by that is, I'm trying to figure out, is there any avenue where local businesses or companies can get grants that could be used towards to paying entertainment? So that there is a very fair wage gap going, I mean, a fair wage situation going on during performers and entertainment? Myself, I've been very lucky, very fortunate. I've been able to perform everywhere, been on tour with a record label. But there are people out there who aren't as fortunate starting off, who are starving. And I know that because they tell me this all the time. So is there a way, how can I, how can I start the conversation legally so that we can see if maybe government grants can be given to businesses specifically towards entertainment purposes? I.
Are you mad, brother?
I, uh, I leave it to you guys. I, I can speak a little on that. Um, it isn't specifically for entertainment purposes, but I am working on a bill for all small business, uh, initiatives with grants and, and loans, which could then be used for, uh, for entertainment as well.
Well, that's, that was gonna get at, basically what I was gonna say is currently, right now, I'm working with the Bureau to come up with social, um, services for the city, um, to be paid through, obviously, through the mayor's office. So this is definitely, and if this is definitely an issue, something you're passionate about, I would say get with them and talk to them, because we are gonna be releasing grants and all that from the revenue, from the tax bill that was passed and the auctions and the hard work of, uh, the Bureau, so. Uh, I hope that kinda helps.
No, cuz.
You have, uh, you can do it that way, or you can, uh, provide, you can present a bill, given, um, all of the requirements to present a bill to the council. If you have certain things that you feel should be instituted.
I mean, I, I really bring this up with passion because I know what it takes to sit down, score a song, put it all together, the hours it takes to mix, to render, put it all in a package and present it on a show, and I know that when I, when I'm out there, I do my thing, and other people out there, they do their thing. But, again, I'm very fortunate, so I'm not even asking for myself. It's for other people out there who are just starting and are busting their ass and just the pay doesn't meet the work. And, and I understand that, you know, it is what it is. It's a dog-eat-dog world out there. But some entertainers, the only job they have is the music, because it takes so long to produce. I have two albums, twenty-four songs each. The hours that went into that is ridiculous. I love it, though. It's my life. But I know some people who are just starting have to learn it, and they have to go out there and put in their hours. Sometimes sixteen to eighteen hours to produce just one or two songs that they could present to the public. And I think that if people saw the work and people understood it, and it's not just some people just opening their mouth with no- knowledge of what the hell's going on, I think, I think you guys would all see that, damn, maybe the entertainment sector, especially in the music scene, should be looked at, because a lot of our musicians have left because of the pay.
Alright, well, we have a, um, oh, I didn't mean to cut you off.
It's good, it's good.
Um, Councilman Falco is a business lawyer, a musician, um, for musicians especially. Um, Falco, do you have anything to say about this? Any opinion on this?
Also, for the record, I'd like to team up with you guys on this as well, then some like, deep in this whole, uh, industry.
Yeah, well, like I said, the grants, um, system is, is in the works right now, we did, we were literally formulating which grant, which grant, where the grant money will go, so.
Yeah. I mean, city, city council could certainly use a theme song.
Damn it, Billy, alright, well, thank you for your time, I, I yield my time.
Right, before Bob.
Don't give Bob one ideas.
But, no, I, I think, I think it's a great, a great thing, and, and it's definitely something we wanna look at, Max.
Thank you.
Yeah, anyone else have any questions?
Just to piggyback on this proposed Department of the Arts, could there be like a sponsorship kind of avenue for businesses that wanna support the department in order to facilitate, um, grants to be given to artists to perform or for events like that?
Uh, how would that work? I mean, I'm, I'm definitely for it, but just curiosity.
So, let.
Not, not to interrupt, but even like a foundation of the arts way, you know, businesses could sponsor it by what fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we don't currently have like a, like, I'm thinking logistically, like, how does, you know, now this is a really open discussion, but, like, logistically, how do we get, how would that department get the money? We just put it all in one big pot of money with the bureau and then...
Uh.
You know, figure all that stuff out, so it's just logistically, I have just my question.
It would probably be, oh, um...
Yeah, I would, I would imagine when it comes to sponsorships and stuff like that, that there'd be some, uh, it'd be through the Business Bureau where, um, donations can be made, tracked, and properly, um... You know, you know, so that way there's a paper trail that like, if some business wanted to, to grant, grant, give as a sponsorship thing, money, so that way there's no like, you know, um, that way it doesn't seem like, oh, where's this, you know, cause it comes from the businesses and stuff like that, so. So like.
I appreciate that comment, go ahead, council member.
I feel like there's two, two things here, is that businesses are always welcome to make, uh, donations, uh, to, to whatever fund they want, and they can also, uh, you know, you can make your own foundation. So if you, if you run a business and you want, uh, you wanna, um, create a foundation of the arts for, for your charity purposes, then we could, uh...
Is, is there paperwork or some sort of, of, uh, form to establish a, um, charity organization? Would that fall under the Business Bureau, or would that be a tax thing?
Uh, I believe it'd be the same as filing for a business, I mean, in the end, it is a business, but it's a terrible business, right?
I mean, there's, yeah, but like, is, if it's a business that's basically like a, um... Like the, like what, like, you know, with, uh, PBS or whatever, uh, where people donate and whatever. I just didn't know if that's, if that's the same kind of distinction, where, yes, a charity would go through the Business Bureau.
Well, let's, uh, we have two business, uh, businessmen in the, uh, in the pews here, so I'm gonna pull up one from the, uh, bureau right now. Uh, Mr. Williams, do you have anything to say about that? Think the bureau could have that capability or capacity, or add that, uh, to your to-do list, so to speak?
Uh, sir, w- while we could add that to our, um, duties and responsibilities, I would, uh, probably recommend, uh, what, uh, Councilman Rossetti was saying, is that, yeah, businesses are wel- welcome to donate to whatever causes they see fit, as long, you know, keeping track of your records. Um, but, I, I mean, we, we could do that, but right now there's no benefit to having a business that's just a nonprofit, because our taxes really levied on businesses, if, if that makes sense.
But could it, the capacity of just donating, say like, businesses donate money to, say, grants that the bureau has, that's something, feel like you're capable of doing?
Uh, hey, we could do it, but like, then you're mixing private money with governmental, uh, like, again, social work, and I think if we're gonna be doing anything with government funds, they need to be taxed funds, not necessarily donated, because, one, um, you can't ever, uh, rely on consistent funding, uh, from just donated funds, and that's what makes it different than supply social services. Uh, and two, uh, it may feel like it's an undue burden to, uh, small businesses, um, even though they may just be set up for that profit. I would much rather, let's say, a soup kitchen starts up, and they set themselves up as a nonprofit, that they turn all that energy and, uh, any profits that they may have into, uh, supporting their own charter, if that makes sense.
Yeah, like, cause if there's like a way to do like proper charitable organizations or endowments, or, um, you know, those types of foundations, like, I don't know if that's a business, or if it's like a subsection of that, you know?
It's all about profit, um... I have another.
I've got a charity!
Um, Dale, what are your thoughts on this? In the bureau?
Um, I think, um, at first thought, it feels like it's a Parks and Recreation adjacent, or something in between both of our departments. Because events, creative opportunities, I, I think we certainly need to address.
Can you come up to the podium? I can't hear you.
Thank you.
Uh, you, do you have any more questions before, before you, uh?
Um, no, that, that kinda just raised the question of like, what, what char, how do you designate a, a organization as a charitable group? And what would, what standards and rules must that group abide by in order to be counted as such, you know?
Alright, um, not necessarily to the last question, Dale, but to the question prior, you have, uh, you were saying something?
Uh, I was just saying that, uh, potentially, maybe the root cause of this is not-for-profits, uh, religious groups or charities, and that they're not defined, they're not well-defined currently, and if we could define those, then the issues of funding, how we mix together funding from different sources, uh, could be addressed, and perhaps this falls between the departments that already exist, such as the Business and Revenue Bureau, and Parks and Recreation. So it's, it's a bit of a complicated one, but I know there's other issues, uh, surrounding this, again, for organizations who are essentially operating as charities, and any profits that they make, uh, going to, um, go, yeah.
Yeah, uh, currently it is vague at best in the constitution.
Absolutely, and, you know, it's, it's definable thing, but we would have to, i- i- it would be the bureau adjacent work or relates to the bureau, because we have to have a huge amount of scrutiny to any organization that purported to be a not-for-profit or, uh, charity. But then, I believe there's issues if, um, we were scrutinizing, say, a religious group, uh, to that same level.
Yeah, so it's fair to say, um, it's fair to say this is a discussion that can't be answered today, but right now, I think, as it stands, it would be a little complicated to just dump the money together.
Yes, I think it's, it's not an incorruptible problem, yeah, we've got some food for thought, uh, and, and it can be tackled, but there are some, some issues and some edge cases that we'd need to, uh, think and, and really write some things succinct about.
No, I, I completely concur, it was a great discussion, great question, um...
Thank you.
But yeah, I appreciate you, Justin Martin.
Thank you.
Or your, your opinion, rather, uh, who else?
Hello, um, my name's Eugene Monroe, um, with Stock Survivor, I just wanna say first off, uh, thank you to the lady that had the courage to stand up for small businesses out everywhere, and congratulations on your unanimous vote from the council. Um, secondly, I, I wa- I was told there was gonna be, um, a potential, uh, auction, uh, about an apartment, I'm kinda down on my luck right now. Okay.
I hear that, sorry to hear that. Um, didn't mean to cut you off, continue, I apologize.
No, that, yeah, my ex-wife's cousin kicked me out, so I just, um, but that's all, that was my question, the auction.
Uh, yes, after the council adjourns, uh, after the open floor, we will have a auction right afterwards.
Okay, pardon, pardon me, your honor, thank you very much, council.
No worries, appreciate your time, thank you for coming up to the podium. Alright, any more questions?
I'll just try and squeak.
Hey, you're good, you're good. I'm in one. Union is adjourned for the second time, the auction will be held right afterwards.
Woo, alright!
Thumbs up.
Oh, man.
Good job, Dale.
Hey, Eugene, I liked your point, by the way, did you have a need to ride back to like a wild card or anything like that?
Pleasure, uh, congratulations, now, uh, the long process begins.
Yeah, so auction will be, uh, no, uh, auction will be committed, or started about, uh, uh, we'll say five hundred.
I just wasn't gonna be sticking out for the auction, so I thought I'd ask.
Get the fuck outta here, Max.
No, I'm here to, I'm here to buy shit.
Did you wanna say download my postal code, if you just needed to write me a letter? No problem, let me know when you're ready.
Yes, no bother at all.
Pass it over, Roxy.
Yeah, we get out there, I got the, I got the guest pass and everything like, yeah, we go, uh, I'll spot you, you smell my dad, you know?
Uh, that's a, a great tribute, please, it's okay.
Yeah, no problem, first name's Jeff, last name is Halliday, H-A-L-L-I-D-A-Y.
You've done all these hard work, and...
And the company's, uh, UI three-three-five, under influence, three-three-five.
You know, I think all the hard steps are.